Is all the technology lined up? Stephanie, is all the technology good? Okay. It is now six P M. And I hereby call the special meeting of the San Benito County Planning Commission to order. For the record, the public comment today will be limited to two minutes. Please hold your applause and no disturbing the meeting. Thank you very much. If we can now have you read the temporary procedures.
The San Benito County Planning Commission welcomes your comments. Each individual speaker will be limited to a presentation total of two minutes. When addressing the commission via Zoom, phone, or in chambers, please state your name and county in which you reside for the record. Please address the commission as a whole through the chair. If participating via Zoom, select the Participants tab and click the Raise Hand icon. If you are using a phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. When your turn arrives, you will hear that you have been unmuted. If you are participating in person at the chambers, please complete a speaker card identifying the item on which you wish to speak and provide your completed speaker card to the clerk prior to consideration of the item. Speaker cards are available on the table at the entrance to the chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. Abraham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Abraham Prado, Director of Planning and Building Services for County of San Benito. During the regular meeting of the San Benito County Board of Supervisors of yesterday, Tuesday, October twenty-four, twenty twenty-three, the Board of Supervisors appointed Mr. Vincent Ringden to the District One Planning Commission seat, which was recently vacated, as you all know. For this reason, we are asking that you please add an item to today's agenda for the soaring in of Mr. Vincent Ringden, who is here in the audience. Per Government Code Section five four nine five four point two, B as in boy two, the legislative body may take action on items of business not appearing on the posted agenda. Prior to discussing any item, the legislative body should publicly identify the item, which is why I am announcing it now. The code indicates that upon a determination by a two-thirds vote of the members of the legislative body present at the meeting, or if less than two-thirds of the members are present, a unanimous vote of those members present, that there is a need to take immediate action and that the need for action came to the attention of the local agencies subsequent to the agenda being posted. Since the appointment took place at a regular Board of Supervisors meeting yesterday, Tuesday, October twenty-fourth, as mentioned, the agenda was already posted. Staff did not know whether the appointment was going to take place or not. So therefore, staff is asking that you please, per the government code, add the agenda item to today's meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Sean, is there any public comment required for that item?
No, no public comment needed, but you should discuss and then make a motion.
Okay.
If you so choose.
Is there any discussion regarding that item? I will, I myself will say I think it's significant that we finally have a full commission again. It's, it's good to be whole. Any other comments before there's a motion? Okay. Is there a motion to put that item on the agenda?
I will motion to add the requested of the Planning Commissioner for District One.
I'll second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And so at this time, we do have the Elections Office. We have Francisco Diaz, who is here and would be doing this swearing in. And Mr. Vincent Ringden, can please come up? And we can have Mr. Francisco Diaz perform the oath.
You want to face me? I'm going to ask you to please say aye, then your name. You don't have to repeat the rest, but you do have to agree with the statement. Start with aye.
Aye.
Full name.
Vincent Ring Hayden.
Do so only swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of State California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of State California, that I will take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties upon which I vow to enter as Planning Commissioner.
I do. Congratulations. Thank you.
Welcome to the commission. Commissioner Ring Hayden.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Would you like to introduce yourself or save that for the regular meeting in November?
I'll introduce myself.
Okay.
Vincent Ring Hayden, representing District One.
That's very good. Thank you. Welcome.
Short and sweet. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, on to the pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Way, welcome back. If you could please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which this stands one nation under God, indivisible and infinite, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we could have a roll call?
Absolutely, sir. District One, Vincent Ring Hayden.
Here.
District number two, Richard Way.
Present.
District number three, Robert Scalioti.
Present.
District number four, Robert Gibson.
Present.
District number five, Celeste Toledo-Bocanegra.
Present.
We have a full commission.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Before we open the public hearing, we're going to disclose any conversations that we've had outside of these hearings. I will start. I have had two or three conversations with the applicant's representative, Mr. Paul Nelson. There we go. Thank you. I've also probably had a couple of dozen conversations with residents and a conversation with staff and the outside council. And I think that covers it. Commissioner Way?
Yeah, I had the opportunity yesterday to watch the October eleventh Planning Commission meeting in its entirety on YouTube. And so that was helpful to me. And I've had a number of conversations with various members of the public, both via email and via phone, largely with opponents, but I'm certainly willing to speak with proponents. It's just none, no one has contacted me privately from that side at this point, so.
Commissioner Toledo?
I was contacted privately by Elias Salinas to speak in regards to the landfill expansion, which then led to a landfill tour with Elias Salinas on September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three at ten A M. On Thursday, October fifth, twenty twenty-three, met with community members to receive input in the landfill expansion. Reyes Benosa was present as well at this meeting. On Friday, October sixth, twenty twenty-three, met with Devin Pack, who was the Planning Commissioner for District Five. In twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, he also has a master's in planning and was very educational in regards to this, this topic. On Tuesday, October seventeen, twenty twenty-three, met with Maureen Nelson. And I'm sorry, forgot the other citizen. I believe her name is Bridgette. If I'm correct, yeah, thank you, Bridgette. And we met at the Heavenly Bakery for about approximately an hour and a half or so and talked about the landfill expansion. And we also, I also met with county council.
Commissioner Scalioti?
Yes, I've met with applicant Paul Nelson several times and had discussions about the project. I've met with staff several times and county council a couple of times over, over this. Thank you.
Commissioner Ring, Commissioner Ring Hayden?
I haven't met with anybody except for this afternoon, just discussing this meeting.
Did you see the public hearing?
I did.
On the eleventh? You watched that?
I did.
Okay. Very good. Thank you all. On to the public hearing, item six point one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission, members of the audience. Good evening. Abraham Prado, once again, Director of Planning and Building Services for the County of San Benito. As you know, at the special meeting of October eleventh, twenty twenty-three, the Planning Commission continued the item of the landfill expansion to a date certain of today, Wednesday, October twenty-fifth, Friday, October twenty-seventh, and Monday, October thirtieth. Outside County Council, who's helping us very diligently with the project, will go over in detail each of those public hearing dates regarding what's going to be covered. As an introduction for this request, the request from the applicant Waste Solutions Group of San Benito LLC is to amend the general plan from its current general plan land use designation of rangeland and agriculture to a public quasi-public PQP land use designation on three hundred and eighty-eight point zero five acres located on the north side of John Smith Road to the existing ninety-five point sixteen acre John Smith Road landfill. The proposed expansion would increase the landfill's capacity, expand the total waste footprint, increase the maximum elevation of the final landfill, increase the maximum permitted daily tonnage to the proposed two thousand three hundred tons per day or lower tonnage pending approval by the county, and identify the haul route for commercial trucks. Very briefly, the county's team involved in the process of this project is as follows. And there is a slide as well that will show. We have myself, Director of Planning and Building Services for the County of San Benito. We have Steve Loop, Public Works Administrator and County Engineer. We have Selena Stotler, who is the manager for the Integrated Waste Management Division of the Resource Management Agency. And she will also be presenting shortly the compost alternative aspect of this project. And we also have our principal planner, Ariel Goodspeed, with us as well. We also have a group of county consultants who have collaborated with the county on this project, and they are Stan Ketchum, and he is the principal planner. And he will be presenting in a bit the project description as well as the proposed and alternative truck routes. We also have Richard Grissette with Grissette Environmental Consulting, and he is an environmental planner who's assisting the County of San Benito. We also have Paul Miller with R C H Group. Mr. Miller is an environmental professional, and he is part of the county's team and will be addressing noise and air quality in a bit during staff's presentation. We also have Cengira Lewis, a professional engineer with, with Lewis Engineering. And we have Joe Rivery, professional engineer with Payment Engineering, Inc. And he'll be addressing an overview of the fair share road impact analysis for the project along with our Public Works Administrator, Steve Loop, in a bit. Bree Moibas with Heffner Law, who has been assisting the county as the county's outside counsel for this project, is also a part of the team. With this, I will turn it to Bree, who will be presenting an overview of the Planning Commission hearing process and background. Thank you.
Good evening, planning commissioners. And this is similar to the slide last week when, or I'm sorry, October eleventh, when you asked to continue the hearing and have multiple hearings on that. What we added to this was comments we received during public comment on October eleventh to cover topics. So this is, and really for the public as well. The plan is to have three hearings. The first one today, obviously, where we'll cover the project description, what their approvals are being requested, an overview of the SEQA process, alternatives that were analyzed, the proposed and alternative truck haul routes, noise and air quality and litter removal related to the haul routes, and then the fair share road impact analysis. And then what the commission has asked is for each hearing to receive public comment on the topics that are covered for that day. Then on October twenty-seventh, we would cover mitigation measures and the conditions of approval, significant and unavoidable impacts that were determined in the environmental analysis, which are greenhouse gases, aesthetics, and then cumulative air quality impacts. And then we'll cover groundwater and landfill liners, water supply, odor and lighting, and the economic analysis. And then again, receive public comment limited to those items. We'll return Monday, October thirtieth. If there's any items that the commission has asked us to revise, for example, a condition approval that the commission would like us to work on, we can return with that on Monday. And any other items that you didn't feel we've adequately covered on those days, you can direct staff to return with presentations. Or if anything, you don't have information on on Monday. And then any remaining public comment, and then the Planning Commission's deliberations and decisions. Our presentations are a little probably more detailed than normal. And, and I would defer to the chair if you'd like to have the commission ask questions kind of to each speaker as they finish or throughout, or, or what's your preference on questions? Because there, some of the topics are kind of different speakers as we go through.
I think we'll just go with each speaker. Makes it easier trying to remember.
That was my thought, but, so if, if the commission does have any questions on what one of the speakers is presenting, then just interrupt and let us know. We can go into more detail. We do realize it's a lot of information that you've been given. And we did go through about two-thirds of that information has been available for over a year since the draft E I R was out, but there is a lot of still new information as well. And so the process today, the county team will be giving a presentation. Then the applicant team will also be giving a presentation. If at that time, there's any clarification you'd like from staff, then we'll be available for that. And then public comment, like we talked about, limited to the items that are covered today. And then questions and comments from the commission. On the topics today, if the commission, for example, the haul route, would like us to return with more information on Friday or Monday, that would be a great time to let us know that. Or if the commission would like to start discussing those items that we've covered, you also would be able to do that. And closing this evening would just be a vote to continue the hearing to Friday, October twenty-seventh. And we've already covered that, all the commissioners have heard the public comment that was given on October eleventh, and ex parte communications were disclosed earlier. So the requested project approvals, and Abraham touched on it, at a big picture, it's two large items that are being requested. The first is a conditional use permit, and your planning commission is a decision-making body for a conditional use permit. The conditional use permit is, is what's going to establish critical features of the expansion project. And two of those would be the daily tonnage. The applicant has requested twenty-three hundred tons per day. And then the environmental analysis also analyzed alternatives at lower tonnages, including seven-hundred tons per day, one thousand tons per day, and three hundred tons per day. If a reduced tonnage is approved, then your commission would decide whether that reduced tonnage would be for the same life as a proposed project, which is approximately sixty-five years. Or because when you take in a reduced tonnage, the life of the landfill can go longer, whether that reduced tonnage can be taking in, taking in less per day, but then operating to the same footprint or the same ultimate landfill area, which would be a longer life for the landfill. And then the other, another critical point is the approved haul route for the trucks. The environmental analysis analyzed three routes at what's called the project level, meaning your commission can adopt any of those routes as the project haul route. The second large request is a general plan amendment. Currently, that land use designation of that area is rangeland and agriculture. And it is asking for a general plan amendment to public quasi-public to allow the government use of landfilling to be there. When it's a general plan amendment, state law provides that your commission makes a recommendation, and then that recommendation ultimately goes to the Board of Supervisors for a decision. If you approve the conditional use permit, there's a condition in there that it does not take effect until the board approves the general plan amendment. So both are required for the project, although you will take final action on the conditional use permit. And I did want to go over as well the limitation on staff recommendations on this project. I think you're probably used to seeing with most projects, a recommendation from staff. Staff is not making a recommendation on most of the project before you. So there is no staff recommendation on whether to approve the conditional use permit, what the daily tonnage should be, what the haul route should be, or on the general plan amendment. The applicant is requesting, I think you'll hear more today, that the best haul, best road haul route be approved as the commercial haul route, which is not what's called the proposed route in the environmental. R M A, or Resource Management Agency, does recommend that the Planning Commission certify the E I R. So the team, and Abraham showed you earlier, was a large team. And I can attest that it was an exhaustive process, and it doesn't just speak in the volume of pages, but also the work that went into those pages. And so we do stand behind the environmental analysis and do recommend that you certify the E I R for the project. And County Integrated Waste Management recommends that the Planning Commission adopt what's been called the composting alternative, but add composting to the approved project. And Selena Stotler will go over that in more detail later. And just for an overview to give a sense of the timeline, and this is a very high-level review of what the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, has, requires for any project. But the project application originally came to the county in January of twenty twenty-one. And then there was what's called public scoping meetings. And those are meetings that are required under SEQA, where the public can come and talk about the environmental issues that they believe should be analyzed in the environmental impact report. And those public scoping comments are included in the Planning Commission Agenda Packet. Then at that point, the county determined that an environmental impact report, or E I R, was required for the project and began that in February of twenty twenty-one. The draft environmental impact report, which is in the Planning Commission Packet, was circulated. State law requires a forty-five day review. The Board of Supervisors extended that for this project. So it went from July fifteenth to September sixth of twenty twenty-two. During that time as well, we had a public presentation to the county's landfill standing committee. And there was also a public workshop that was more of a town hall style, where we had the county team and applicant team there and topic tables where the public could go around and ask questions that they had. During the time after that, our task was to prepare what, what SEQA calls the final E I R. And one of the critical pieces, which is most of the volume of the final E I R, is responding to every public comment received. So we received about ninety-nine public comments. And you will see, you've seen in your agenda packet that it identifies each comment by number and responds to that specific comment by number. And so that's part of the final E I R. It also made some revisions to the E I R. So if the public pointed something out or addressed something or a revision to a mitigation measure, for example, that's then in the final E I R, and the draft E I R and final E I R are taken together. And then the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program that we do have on our agenda to go over in more detail on Friday is also part of the final E I R. But that's all the mitigation measures that were determined to be required under the environmental analysis and how, over the life of the project, all of that is going to be ensured that each mitigation measure is followed and enforced. And then, here we are now, the last step on the boxes, is the public hearings and your consideration of certification of the E I R. And again, your planning commission will decide whether to certify the E I R for the conditional use permit. And then you will make a recommendation to the board on whether to certify the E I R for the general plan amendment. Ultimately, if the conditional use permit is approved or denied and appealed to the board, then the board would be hearing both the general plan amendment and the conditional use permit. And in more detail, this is in the staff report as well, but the actions required to approve the landfill expansion project, would one, be certifying the final E I R, adopting what SEQA calls findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations? And the statement of overriding considerations is a determination required. If there are significant and unavoidable impacts to the environment, determined through the environmental review to approve the project, you have to find that the benefits of the project outweigh those impacts. And then you would also have to adopt the mitigation measures to reduce any impacts that you can and then adopt the mitigation and monitoring and reporting plan. After certification, you would then adopt the conditional use permit that would include the determination of maximum tons per day, the haul route of trucks, and any other conditions that you believe are appropriate for the project. It would also be required that you recommend the board certify the E I R and adopt the statement of overriding considerations and the monitoring plan for the general plan amendment, and then recommend to the board to amend the general plan to change the land use designations. And that is all I have. If there's any questions on process or the environmental review, I'm happy to answer those now.
Are there any questions of the commission at this time?
And Stan, Stan Ketchum is going to go over the project description.
Thank you, Bree. Good evening. I'm Stan Ketchum. I'm a contract planner with the county, and this has been one of my main, one of my main projects. Just to start, the project description at the very highest level, I'm pretty sure everybody in the room is familiar where the landfill is located, on John Smith Road, east of Fairview Road. This slide shows the, in the red, if you can see it here, in the, the red outline is the existing landfill area of about ninety-five acres, pardon me, excuse me. The black outline is the expansion area. And to the south of John Smith Road is a one-hundred-and-one acre parcel that has, is county-owned and has both a thirty-acre approximately portion that has been, was zoned some time ago to allow a resource recovery park. was zoned some time ago to allow a resource recovery park that has not yet come forward, and then 70-some-odd acres in the blue outline that I'll describe a little bit later that are potentially part of the project for habitat mitigation. This is a slightly closer-up location map, shows the same areas I just referred to, geez, sensitive, and gives a relationship more clearly of the proposed existing and proposed landfill to the community of Hollister to the west. This is the actual site plan for the future development of the expansion area, and it shows, very hard to see in detail, of course, but again, here's the existing landfill area. We'll describe in later, the approximately five-acre area that is actually owned by the city of Hollister, that's called a Class 1 landfill site that's been closed for some time. We'll talk about that in a minute. And then this diagram shows the different phases of how the expansion would occur over the long lifetime of the project if approved. The landfill expansion proposed project has a number of components that we need to outline for you. The, as was already mentioned, the existing 95-acre size of the landfill, and the proposed 388-acre addition to make a total of a 483-acre site. The left-hand side of this diagram, the table, shows what we call the baseline, either the existing situation, or if there's some permitted permit involved, what the permit says, and then the proposed areas on the right for the proposed project. The current amount of gross airspace or volume of that can be filled by the projects currently stands at nine, little over 9 million cubic yards, gross airspace, and then the proposed expansion adds and goes to 48 million cubic yards. The waste footprint, which is the area of the operation of the of the landfill, currently stands at 58 acres, and the proposed project adds 252-plus acres. The current maximum allowed vertical elevation of the landfill is 920 feet. The proposed project is requesting an addition of 29 additional feet for a total maximum allowed height of 949 feet. Currently, the existing hills in that area are between 780 and 960 feet, depending on where you're looking at. The current allowed tons per day accepted at the landfill is 1,000 tons per day, and as mentioned, the requested proposal by the applicant is to go allow up to 2,300 tons per day. Also, the current current landfill operation allows an unlimited acceptance of what's called waste for beneficial reuse, which is things like soil, demolition debris, green and wood waste that can be used for erosion control. Those amounts are unlimited amounts of those are allowed to be received and would continue in the proposed project. There's also several operational changes that will occur, would occur with the proposed project, and that would expand over time. The environmental controls and monitoring systems that are currently in place and will expand as the project grows include the leachate and gas collection and groundwater monitoring. The proposed project will add a renewable natural gas facility to convert the natural landfill gas into natural gas that can be used in the PG&E gas system. There'll be expanded litter and dust control mechanisms. I'll go into those a little bit more in a minute. They include off-site collection of litter, a new 24-hour hotline to leave messages, complaints, and concerns about litter, and additional signage, among other items. I mentioned a minute ago what's called the Clean One area, a Class 1 area, excuse me, which is an area of about five acres that many years ago was allowed to accept hazardous waste, mostly from agricultural activities in the area, and that was closed a number of years ago. And the proposed project is to would continue and complete the closure of that under the auspices of the state, and then convert that area to additional what's called Class 3, or the existing landfill operation. Commercial vehicle haul route, as Bree mentioned, there are a variety of alternatives that we'll explain in terms of options for the haul route that the commercial trucks would would take to go to and from the site. The project includes an expanded entrance area from the current 1.5 acres to about five acres. The key component of that is expanding, excuse me, extending the entrance area roadway from its current 800 feet to 1,900 feet, which would allow allow significant additional queuing or stacking of vehicles on the landfill site and not on John Smith Road. In terms of water supply, the various components could include or will include the onsite stormwater basins, use of an offsite well, and also possibly some water from the Sunny Slope Water District that would be trucked in. Lastly, the habitat mitigation area, I mentioned the part of the land, county-owned land to the south of John Smith Road, there's approximately 70 acres that would be available to be part of the habitat mitigation requirements that that the EIR requires. Just to go into a little more detail about the expanded litter and dust control, the current onsite activities include the daily cover of the exposed refuse. State law requires that the end of each day that soil is placed over the amount of waste that's been been dumped in the day, and permanent and temporary litter fences that are placed strategically to capture the litter that blows around. On-site litter collection, in addition, what's called a truck wheel wash, which is designed to try to remove as much mud and dirt from the wheels of the trucks before they leave the site, and and prevent as much tracking of that dirt onto the onto John Smith Road and the other roads. And lastly, road watering of the onsite roads to prevent dust. Offsite improvements that are going to be added as a part of the proposed project include a offsite litter collection along the approved haul route of a minimum of three times a week. The 24-hour litter hotline will be established, and a monthly report of all of the all of the comments received on the litter hotline will be required to be presented to the Integrated Waste Management Department. Litter complaints that are made on the hotline will be are required to be responded to within 48 hours. And if the best road location, best road is not picked as the haul route, then a monthly litter collection along best road would occur. There'll be expanded signage along the along the John Smith Road and leading to the leading to the project site, in particular, to emphasize the requirement for covering loads with tarps, which is a big, important component of trying to reduce litter. And also a site entrance camera that will help be able to monitor the success of tarping of you by customers. The renewable natural gas facility is designed to burn the buried organic materials that generate the landfill gas, which is a combination of methane and carbon dioxide. The methane and CO2 are greenhouse gases. The RNG facility will extract and process 92% of the methane from the landfill instead of it escaping. And the product, as we said, is from the natural gas facility is actually natural gas that'll be piped, connected about a mile with a new pipeline to an existing PG&E pipeline to be part of that system. Remaining methane that does not get converted will be combusted in the onsite flare, which is the what's already there and would be expanded. It's important that the project requirements include that the research, the natural gas facility be fully operational before the project produces approximately 550 cubic, I already forgot what CFM is, one of the consultants will remind me, and that approximately 50% of methane of recovered recovered landfill gas. I mangled that, I apologize. But point is, there's an established critical timeframe that the that facility is required to be online. The Clean One area closure I talked about is approximately just a little less than a .8 acre site that was a liquid hazardous waste disposal site in the late 70s, early 80s, closed in 1992. And the clean closure process involves excavating and removing any remaining hazardous waste, transporting that hazardous waste soil to a Class 1 disposal facility, verifying that all contamination has been removed, and then when the state approves that closure process, that area can be converted into additional Class 3 landfill area. The applicant has only proposed the clean closure of the Class 1 site with the 2,300 tons per day project proposal, but if the applicant could agree to clean closure of the clean close, the Class 1 area, if a smaller daily tonnage is approved. I mentioned the habitat mitigation, the 70-acre property on the south side of John Smith Road is available as one option to help with the mitigation for sensitive species impacts. And if that is is applied, then a conservation easement would be required, and would be executed between the county and the applicants. The alternatives analyzed in the EIR and the commercial haul routes include a number of permutations, if you will. As Bree, I think, mentioned, there's three alternate amounts of of waste that would could be allowed that were analyzed in the ER. Again, the proposed project is 2,300 tons per day. The alternatives analyzed were 1,700 tons per day, 1,000 tons per day, and 300 tons per day. And then at the 1,700 and 1,000 tons per day, there were two sub-alternatives, if you wish. One that would allow expand the project across the entire amount of airspace that was proposed and the footprint, but at a at a lower rate from down to 1,700 tons per day, which would mean that the the life of the of the landfill could could go on longer. And then the those are the 1A and 2A, pardon me, 1B and 2B are somewhat the opposite, match the would allow reduced gross airspace and footprint, excuse me, and footprint, phew. And then 300 tons per day alternative as well. Then in addition, there are two other location alternatives, looking at different places that the landfill or ways the landfill could occur. The southern landfill alternative is to a separate landfill to be proposed on the property to the south, county-owned 101-acre parcel. That was an additional alternative that actually included an additional 67 acres would be required in order to make that landfill concept viable as an alternative. And then alternative five, the transfer station alternative, that would would say that if after the if none of the others are permitted, then a transfer station would be considered after the John Smith Road landfill closes in 15 years, which is its current remaining timeframe, and that transfer station would be considered somewhere in the general vicinity of the city of Hollister. And then the EIR is required by CEQA also analyzes analyzes what's called the no project alternative, which effectively says what would be the impacts if this project just would not go forward. So that's required by CEQA in order to compare the impacts with all the others that are In addition, as we've just, we've also talked about here, there's two additional haul route, haul routes, which I'm going to talk about in a minute, so I'll go into the detail of those in just a minute. And then lastly, and as Bree mentioned, the applicant has requested that the best road haul route be the one that's selected. And I'm going to turn it over to Selena now from Integrated Waste Management to talk about the compost alternative.
As stated earlier, staff is not making a recommendation on the project size or haul route. We are making a strong recommendation that the composting alternative be included as part of the project. Under California's short-lived climate pollutant reduction strategy, otherwise known as Senate Bill 1383, reducing organic waste in landfills throughout the state of California has been identified as a key implementation strategy to respond to our climate crisis. This is because decomposing organic waste in landfills creates methane gas, which is approximately 84 times more potent than carbon dioxide. Furthermore, landfills have been identified as the third-largest source of methane in California. With all of this additional and beneficial organic waste anticipated throughout the state, there is a clear need for approximately 50 to 100 new or expanded organic waste processing facilities. SB 1383 further requires counties to take the lead in planning for organic waste recycling, and the regulations state new or expanding landfills must implement an organic waste recovery activity. Lastly, I'll add, we are expecting a letter of support soon from Cow Recycle, the State Departments of Resources Recycling and Recovery regarding this matter. We anticipate a significant amount of funds to be made available for this type of infrastructure. One example, the state recently proposed allocating 81 million to jurisdictions to expand organics recycling in California. We are likely to see more opportunities like this for the county to consider in the future. The nearby Marina landfill, for example, was recently awarded 3 million to assist with the development of their organics diversion facilities. Having the compost alternative included as part of the project could aid in receiving any future funds. Overall, this could provide the opportunity to divert material from the landfill and increase the life of the landfill. It is not expected or requested that the applicant construct, operate, or fund any future facility, but including this composting alternative now provides the county with flexibility, opportunity, and a means to best plan for SB 1383 compliance. Thank you, and I'm going to pass it back to Stan.
Thank you, Selena. The last, the last thing I wanted to cover was, pardon me, was the commercial vehicle haul route alternatives. This slide is kind of a high level, but I just wanted to be able to show, as shown in in the blue line, is the current haul route coming south on 101, then turning onto Shore Road, continuing Shore Road, excuse me, coming down SR 25, pardon me, and then turning onto Shore, and then turning into Fairview Road to come down to John Smith Road. There's two, I mentioned the two alternative haul routes that were analyzed. Let me go on to the next slide here, see these in a little more detail. We'll see again the the current, the the proposed haul route as part of the project would have, my finger slipped, would have the, I'm going to stop doing that. The green line is the proposed haul route staying on SR 25 further to come down to right McCloskey Road and turn turn left, it would be onto McCloskey, right McCloskey, over to Fairview, and then down to John Smith Road, and that would reduce the amount of road of Fairview used by a number of miles. Alternative six is what's called the South Fairview Road alternative. That's the the dark green, almost very dark green, that would have the the trucks stay on 25, Highway 25, all the way down to Fairview Road, and then turn left on Fairview, going north up to John Smith Road, and then making a right turn onto John Smith Road to the landfill. And then lastly, the best road alternative, it's purple line, the trucks would stay on State Route 25 all the way down to Best Road, and then left turn up Best Road and right turn onto John Smith Road. So those are the alternative haul routes that were all evaluated at a full project analysis level in the EIR, so they can be considered by the planning commission and the and the board of supervisors. And I think it's time for me to turn it over to Paul Miller, who's on Zoom, I believe, is to talk about noise and air quality. We'll see if that works. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Stan. Can you hear me now?
Very well.
Okay. I'm Paul Miller with the RCH Group Company. We assisted the county in the peer review of the technical studies in the EIR, specifically the air quality, greenhouse gas, and noise analysis. The first item I'll discuss is the traffic noise for the haul routes. The EIR analyzed noise impacts along each of the haul routes, in all cases, modeling the noise levels from future activities at a distance of approximately 100 feet from the roadway centers. We studied several roadway segments from the proposed incoming haul route from State Highway 25 to Wright McCloskey, to Fairview, to John Smith Road, to the landfill. We also studied noise from existing heavy truck trips going from John Smith Road to Fairview, to Shore Road, to State Highway 25. That's, that's the exit road, the route. Except for the McCloskey link, this is the route that has been traveled by heavy trucks in the past. Our measurements are in the units of decibel units that are shown as DBA, LDN, and that's a little too much detail, but those are the decibels that we measured. And it's an average increase of noise level over a 24-hour period. In this discussion, I will indicate the decibel increase in various locations. While the baseline noise levels varied over different roadway segments, the proposed increase was only up to approximately one decibel increase on most segments. This is just barely noticeable. It takes approximately a three-decibel increase to be clearly noticeable. Noise levels increase in some places from 61 to 62, on other segments from 68 to 69. The John Smith Road segment would increase from 61 to 63 decibels. This is a 2.2 decibel increase, still barely noticeable at that point. The Best Road haul route would have a much larger increase in noise levels. This is because of the low levels of existing traffic and the, and the traffic-related noise from those vehicles on Best Road. Best Road, keep, keep on the previous slide still, so you don't need to advance. Best Road would increase from 51 to 58 decibels. This is a seven-decibel increase, and it would be clearly noticeable. However, the resulting noise level of 58 decibels along Best Road would not exceed the county transportation noise level standard of 60 decibels for residential units. So there would be a large noticeable noise increase on Best Road, but the overall noise would be less than the current noise levels along the proposed project route in the EIR, which is mainly along Fairview Road going to Shore Road. Next slide, please. So all those numbers that were just discussed are sort of in the fifth column of this table from the EIR, Table 4.5-7, compares the existing to the existing plus project. And those were the largest increases in our modeling. Once you add in cumulative noise, the impact of the heavy, heavy-duty trucks becomes even Next slide. Oh, oh, go back to the previous slide, let's see, previous slide before this, too. I should have added on this slide that there's also the South, the summary of the South Fairview Road haul route alternative. It would not cause a significant noise impact, and the increased noise would be less than the significance level. This alternative would eliminate, however, any traffic noise associated with McCloskey, Wright McCloskey Road and the Best Road. So then you can skip forward two slides. Air quality for the haul routes. Because the haul routes do not change the amount of waste transported, the haul route alternative only changes the route, and therefore, the South Fairview alternative and the Best Road alternative routes would not alter the number of vehicle trips, and they would not substantially alter the vehicle miles. Therefore, the air quality emissions and greenhouse emissions would not change based upon these haul routes. There would be minor differences in vehicle miles traveled, but very minimal. No significant air quality or greenhouse gas impacts would occur localized, no localized impacts would occur along these haul routes. Essentially, the project changes be an increase of up to 95 truck round trips per day regardless of the haul truck route. Next slide. Greenhouse gas emissions from haul trucks. The EIR identified project greenhouse gas emissions as significant and unavoidable impact of the proposed project. Several greenhouse gas emission-reducing measures are included in the project, including the renewable natural gas facility. And mitigation measures have also been recommended in the EIR to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Haul vehicles are a major contributed to, contributor to greenhouse gas emissions, and these emissions would be highest in the initial years before the adoption of electric haul trucks are available. Most haul trucks are now diesel-fueled. The EIR assumes that 60% of the haul trucks would be zero emission vehicles by 2040. And California is doing a lot to move in this direction. California continues to regulate, add regulations for zero emission vehicles, cars, and trucks. The advanced clean fleets regulations are the latest regulations adopted this year. The regulations would increase the availability of ZEV trucks. Manufacturers are to only manufacture ZEV trucks starting in the 2036 model year. California is discouraging the use of compressed natural gas or CNG vehicles because of the higher greenhouse gas emissions, trying to move directly from diesel vehicles to electric vehicles. There are other fuels that can also reduce greenhouse gas emissions in the heavy-duty trucks, if available. These include biodiesel, renewable diesel fuel, and renewable natural gas. Next slide, please. This was a duplicate. Go forward, one more, one more slide. The greenhouse gas mitigation for onsite equipment. This is a mitigation 4.4 D2, and this is the procedure to upgrade onsite equipment to be run by renewable energy. I won't go through all this, but this is part of the EIR and would be adopted as part of the project. And this could be used for other technologies as well, a similar procedure, looking at commercially available and proven technologies. And with that, I'll turn it back to Stan, I believe. Or perhaps, Sinead Lewis.
Before we go on to the next section, I'd like to see if the commissioners have any questions, since there was a lot of information in that presentation. We'll start with Commissioner Ringhaden.
One of the questions was about the noise. My question was kind of, is it a continued, did they measure it as a continuous noise? Or is it just like at that moment of time? Does that make any sense?
Is your mic on?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's truck pass-bys. So it's the energy, each truck pass-by has a certain amount of energy, and that energy is translated into overall noise for the receptors, the perception of receptors, so.
Okay. Commissioner Scagliotti.
Yeah, one question on what pertains right now, but I'm going back to the haul route. The haul route, will it be ingress and egress to southbound to John Smith? They come 25 to, to Best Road to deliver, and then they come right back out the exact same route, right? Okay, no Fairview, no, that's 25, Best Road, Best Road, 25, home. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Way.
That was actually my, my question as well, so thank you.
Commissioner Toledo.
I'll wait for my comments. Thank you.
Okay. I had a question about the clean close of the Class 1 site. If this were to go forward, when would that start, the clean closure? Is, what trigger for that? I don't recall seeing that language in there. Is there a certain trigger, a date, a number of tons?
It's a function of sequencing.
Could I get you to come to the mic, please?
The clean closure would happen as a function of the sequencing of the build-out of the actual landfill. And I think there's a between eight- to 10-year period by which, at that point in time, we'd go into the clean closure mode of the Class 1 site.
Any, any way to expedite that?
We'd have to talk to the engineers and the sequencing of the landfill development.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Scagliotti.
One more quick question for Paul. If this, if this does not go through, what will it cost the county to clean up that Class 1 fill site?
Well, first of all, it's property of the city of Hollister.
Okay.
Okay, and right now, it's on an unlined, it's unlined, and it's, it's proven to have contaminants. Without cleaning it, my understanding is yet to have impacted the aquifer, but that doesn't mean it wouldn't impact it at some point in the future. So it's, you know, it's a ticking time bomb, and so the question becomes, you know, when do you take care of it? I mean, so really, it's a policy decision as to when to deal with it.
Has the city approached you about cleaning it up? Have they asked?
We've approached the city, letting them know. And they're very interested in our participation of that clean.
Thank you.
Okay. Bree, could you comment on that, if the county shares any burden of clean closure if the project is not expanded?
Let me come back to that one, if that's okay, because I think it's a bit more complicated.
Okay.
And so the landfill operating agreement has carve-outs, and there's a lot of carve-outs in that. The county has historically contributed funds with, with that area, but I can return on that and try and, there's a lot of historical documents that I would go over for that.
Okay, okay. And I have one last question. If the application was denied, Waste Solutions would continue to clean the trash up, correct, until John Smith landfill is closed?
When you say continue to clean the trash, what trash?
Along the roads and...
So they would have to continue with their current litter obligations.
Okay.
Under the landfill operating agreement, the county actually contributes funds towards that, but they would have to continue because they'd still be operating under the agreement.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Please proceed.
So going back to the haul route and the considerations there, so the EIR also looks at the impacts to the county roads from the haul trucks. And the EIR did determine that the haul trucks, that are five-axle trucks, have an impact to the county roads, and that it could cause roadway hazards if there's not regular rehabilitation, repair, reconstruction, and maintenance of the county's roads where the haul route is. And so the environmental document adopts its mitigation measure 4.2-4, and it requires the board of supervisors to adopt a fair share fee toward roadway rehabilitation, repair, and reconstruction along the haul route for the life of the expansion project. And it requires the county and applicant to annually evaluate and reassess the, what is necessary that year really for rehabilitation, repairs, reconstruction, and maintenance of the haul route. And the fee would be adopted under what's called the Mitigation Fee Act. And the Mitigation Fee Act allows a jurisdiction to require an applicant or a developer to contribute what their fair share is to an impact to the county. And to do that, the county needs to show a nexus and a connection and show what that fee is, is attributable to what the applicant is proposing and to the impacts from their project, not other projects. So what the county did to do, to comply with that mitigation measure is engage a consultant, and he's here today, Joe Reary, to go over his Nexus study that determines the impact to the county roads just from the expansion project and the commercial heavy-duty trucks. And I will pass it to Joe.
All right, thanks, Bree. I'll provide a quick intro before we turn it over to Joe with pavement engineering. So I'm Steve Lut, Public Works Administrator, and good evening, Chair, Commissioners, members of the public. So we've heard about the routes and the route options, and the next few slides, we're going to be talking about impacts to the roads, because, you know, we've received a lot of public comments, written and otherwise, and, you know, it's, it's not obvious, or it is obvious, I should say, that our roads are not, not in great condition out there. And on that note, I do want to mention that the, the existing route, which goes from 25 to Shore to Fairview to John Smith, we are actually starting, and this is completely independent of the landfill expansion, but around December, we're going to be starting reconstruction of Shore Road from Fraser Lake to Perry Court. And then soon after that, or right after that, we'll be starting the reconstruction of Shore Road from Perry Court to Fairview. And then over the next year and a half, we're actually going to be finishing the last four segments of Fairview Road's reconstruction as well, because it takes time for the county to accumulate funds to do those different things. And a lot of those funds actually are enterprise funds, which came from the landfill. But I just wanted to put that out there, that regardless of the expansion or not, the existing route will be reconstructed over the past year and a half. So, back to the study and the Nexus study that Bree just mentioned. So we reached out to Pavement Engineering, Inc., the county did, to perform an analysis of the impact to the pavement to county roads from the heavy trucks, the five-axle trucks that Bree mentioned, transporting solid waste to the landfill along the different routes. So we analyzed the proposed route and the two alternative routes as well. And the Nexus study discusses what is the fair share of the applicant and the impacts that the applicant has to the road. That's their fair share. So essentially, the report provides a determination and supporting analysis of that fair share contribution of the landfill operator for number one, the initial reconstruction to bring the haul routes to the necessary standards to accommodate heavy trucks for the expansion project. And so what the report does is it says, okay, over the next three years, if the expansion's approved, how do we bring the chosen, selected route up to the standards needed to accommodate the additional trucks? So that's part of the impact and fair share that is calculated in the report. So in other words, a route selected, the route selected, over the first three years would be brought up to the standards needed to accommodate the additional trucks, the semi-trucks. So that was number one. Number two, it calculated repairs of the haul route, roads over the life of the expansion project. Now, there's a little difference between repairs and maintenance. Maintenance is kind of wear and tear on the roads, and, and impact fees unfortunately can't be accumulated for maintenance of the road, but... But when there's significant failures of the road due to the construction or some other things, we can actually set aside money for those type of repairs, just not ongoing maintenance type of repairs. So that was the second thing that the Nexus study calculated. And the third thing was reconstruction of the haul route roads over the life of the expansion project. So once that route is brought up to standard over the next three years, from that point on, there's a 20-year cycle. And that's the life of a pavement, asphalt pavement lasts for about 20 years. And so over the life of those, all those 20 years, it was calculated, you know, what's the county's responsibility? If there were no trucks, we still have to maintain the roads, which we need to do a better job of, but we still need to maintain the roads to county standards. And then, on top of that, what's the fair share impact of the additional semi-trucks that are, you know, whatever tonnage could be approved or is approved at the time? What is that fair share? What's that additional pavement needed? And that cost was calculated to be paid for, as Bree just mentioned, with an impact fee. And that was calculated in the report as well to be paid by the applicant. So with that, I'm going to introduce, well, I'll break up the study into, we broke up the study into two primary goals. The first one is just, call it Pavement 101, kind of how does pavement react to loads and weather and those type of things? And then the second part of this presentation here, we'll talk a little more details about the conclusions of the study. And so Joe Reary, his company not only specializes in pavement analysis, pavement needs, but they actually perform pavement inspections during construction. So one of the, you know, the advantages and the pluses of that is, you know, they calculate pavement and how it should work from their office computers and do things that engineers do. But their company also works out in the field, they take coring pavements, and they see how pavement reacts once it's constructed. And so Joe's team does both of that. And so I'll let Joe give us some education with Pavement 101.
Steve.
Thank you very much, Steve. It's a pleasure to be here, Mr. Jermaine and members of the commission and members of the public. We're gonna, we thought it would be really helpful to just go through some of the basics of pavement and how it deteriorates. And so let's jump into that. So when we design pavement, what you do is you look at two different forces that are affecting the pavement. The first is, is what is the pavement being built on? And the second is, is what is, what are the loads that are being placed on the pavement? And the worse the underlying soil and the heavier the trucks, the more, the thicker the pavement section needs to be. And so that's kind of a basic premise that we start off with here. Now, when we talk about asphalt pavement, asphalt does not deteriorate linearly. It deteriorates along this kind of an S-shaped curve. We call it a deterioration curve. And what it tells us is the pavement will look good for a while, and then it reaches a point where it falls off very quickly. And then, when it reaches its poor state, it just stays in that poor state until something happens to it. And we've seen that kind of thing before in the past. We'll drive on a road and then one day we'll just say, wow, when did this road get so bad? And that's because it's starting to fall off and become more deteriorated. So asphalt pavement deteriorates two different ways. The first way is environmental, and the second way is through fatigue load from heavy vehicles. And let's take a look at each one of those independently. So the first is the impact of the sun and the water, which is more of the environmental types of distresses or deterioration that will happen. So when pavement is constructed, it's made up of different sized aggregates that are held together with oil or a binder that holds it together. Now, over time, that binder, as it begins to get oxidized, will actually begin to have volatiles burn out of it and it will begin to shrink. And its mass gets smaller and so cracks start to form as it begins to shrink. And as the cracks begin to form, water is able to get into the pavement and it begins to deteriorate, not only in the structure itself, but actually below as well. The second way that pavements deteriorate is through loading. And loading can be really tricky as we get into it, because we can get into equivalent single axle loads and we can get into all traffic indexes and there's all kinds of really cool equations that get into this. But we boiled it down into something a little bit more bite-sized for all of us to be able to wrap our head around. And so we took a standard vehicle. Now, this will tell you how long ago that we did this, because the standard vehicle that we used was a Chevy S10 Blazer. And if you remember what that was, it was a small SUV. And for those who want to Google it, you can look up Chevy S10 Blazer. And what we did is we compared it to typical weights of different kind of numbers of axles of trucks. And this is what we found out, is that a typical two-axle truck will be equal to, as far as loading conditions for a pavement, 442 Chevy S10 Blazers. A one fully-loaded five-axle truck that's carrying the 80,000-pound load is equal to almost 15,000 Chevy S10 Blazer units. And you can see in between the other types, you know, garbage trucks and buses and different other types of vehicles. And so when it comes to pavement, the design, it is not the busyness of the road that drives the design, it's the loading that's happening on the road. And that was significant for this study because of the heavy trucks. Now, when pavements deteriorate, as mentioned, it's environmentally or it's fatigue loading. And these are different types of distresses that are common that we can see as we drive down the road. The first is called weathering or ravelling, and it's an environmental distress. And it's caused by either the traffic running on the surface of it or the water running across the road and it begins to wash out the smaller particles. And eventually, there's enough of the smaller particles that are lost that the larger particles start to come out. And, but it's all surface-related type of distresses. As the pavement begins to shrink, then you start seeing the cracks start opening up. And the first place is the cracks will start to open, this is where the construction joints were, because those are the weak places. And so in the second picture, you'll see a great big long crack down the middle where the paving joint was. And that's a transverse crack, I mean a longitudinal crack. And then transversely, again, as the pavement begins to shrink, it will start to break in places. And the third slide shows us a block shrinkage type of a crack. And what you'll see is, is the first time it starts to happen and those cracks begin to appear, they're about 20 feet in square, and then they break down 10 by 10 and 5 by 5 and they keep breaking down like that. And then the third slide shows us alligator cracking. Now, I don't know who came up with that, but it just looks like alligator skin. And so that's how it got its name. The first three are all environmental types of distresses and deterioration. The fourth is fatigue. And that's significant, again, for what we're looking at, that if you build a new piece of road and never use it and never put any heavy traffic on it, it will still deteriorate and it will exhibit the three types of distresses, or the distresses shown in the first three slides or pictures. The fourth is fatigue. So that's telling us that the pavement's life is used up. And one of the things that I like to think about is when we design pavements, we try and anticipate the amount of loading that is going into the pavement. And I think of it like a bank account. And every time one of these heavy vehicles drives over it, it's like a withdraw that comes out of that pavement structure bank account. And eventually, when you hit zero, you start seeing the types of alligator cracking indicating that the pavement is, its life is used up and it's given us everything that it can. Now, I'd like to turn it over to Steve to get into some more details about the study.
All right, so real quick, I'll just refresh our memories from a few minutes ago on the existing route, which is Shore Road from 25 to San Felipe and then Fairview Road from San Felipe to John Smith and John Smith from Fairview to the landfill entrance. The proposed haul route for the project is along Wright Road McCloskey and all the way to Fairview Road and Fairview Road down to John Smith and then left on John Smith up to the landfill entrance. The South Fairview Alternative is staying on Highway 25 all the way till you get to Fairview, turn left on Fairview and then right on John Smith to the landfill. And the Best Road Alternative, the trucks are on Highway 25 all the way to Best Road, left on Best Road and up to the landfill. So, as was mentioned earlier, there's three primarily tonnages. Well, there were three tonnages analyzed for the Nexus study specifically. The 2,300 tons per day, which is the project tonnage, 1,700 tons per day, which is kind of the middle of where we're at currently, before there was a freeze, so to speak, on the tons per day, which was the baseline, which was 1,000 tons per day. So, what was the study approach? Step one, we calculated the 20-year design life based on the traffic index of those three tonnages. So over 20 years, how much were those axles affecting the pavement? Two, we determined the pavement section needed to meet the traffic loading for both the anticipated extra tonnage that was of those 2,300, 1,700,000. We calculated that. And then we also calculated what the pavement sections of the roads along that route should be if there were no trucks at all. And the delta, those extra tonnages, that's the fair share. And then we estimated the construction costs, cost per ton for each route, based on the daily tonnage. Then we developed an intermittent repair schedule, so how much would it cost to do those big dig-out repairs over an extended period of time? Then we looked at some of the monetary impacts and we compared some of the financial impacts, which I'll look at in a moment. Now, there's also going to be, if you didn't have a chance to peruse the earlier slides, there's going to be a detailed financial analysis. I think it's during the next meeting, right, Bree? Insulin, yeah. So there's how much revenue the different tonnages could actually generate? And then we'll compare that with, you know, some of the annual costs of the roads as well. But what we did on the next slide is we looked at the total cost for 20 years of the reconstruction to rebuild the road in 20 years. And so along the existing route, if you were going to rebuild that whole route over that, those courses, well, just the roads along the existing route, it'd actually be almost $60 million. Now, just to bring it up to county standards, if you were to rebuild the existing route from scratch, as Joe said, if the bank account's empty, there's, it's all, everything's used up, kind of like a lot of patches on Fairview and Shore Road today. The total cost of the existing route would be $60 million. The county share would be $36 million and the operators would be $22 million. So that's over 20 years. So you take those costs and you break those into 20 pieces and that would be the annual cost. And just as sort of a reference point, the cost per ton would be about $1.68. So, and then along the proposed haul route, it actually drops quite a bit. It would be $26 million to reconstruct that route completely. The county share would be $15 million, just to bring it up to just county standards. And then the delta fair share from the extra impacts would be $11 million. And this is for 2,300 tons per day. This is the proposed project. South Fairview, the total cost would be $13 million, 7.5 million would be the county's responsibility, 5.8 would be the operator's responsibility. And Best Road, total cost for that route for 2,300 tons per day would be $7 million. The county's cost would be 4.7 and the operators would be 2.4 million over 20 years. So that's total cost, you divide that by 20, so that's your cost per year. Now, repair costs over 18 years, because you don't necessarily have to start repairs right away, but hopefully. And so over 18 years, repair costs are broken down as follows. The existing route, county share would be 2.3 million, operators would be 1.4 million. Proposed haul route, county share over 18 years would be almost $1 million and the operators' costs would be $723,000. The South Fairview Alternative, we, the county, would be responsible for $460,000 for repairs and the operator $360,000. And the Best Road Alternative, $300,000 and $150,000 for the operator. Now, we also estimated just county costs of maintenance, that's just county costs over those same segments. We don't have to really necessarily talk about that, because that's just the estimated cost of the roads, period. So just for maintaining the roads to their county standards. So I'm going to pause there before I go to the other two slides. And, well, it's up to the commission. I have the same, we have the same numbers for the 1,700 tons per day and the 1,000 tons per day, so I can go through those as well and pause, or I can pause here for questions.
Please go through all the slides.
All righty. 1,700 tons per day alternative. Existing route, total cost to reconstruct that route, $55 million, county share would be 36 and the operators would be 18 million. Proposed haul route, total cost $25 million, county share would be 15 million and 9 million would be for the operator. South Fairview Alternative, $12 million total, 7.5 for the county and 4.7 for the operator. And Best Road Alternative is 6.7, 4.7 for the county and 1.9, about 2 million for the operator. And before I even talk about the repair costs, I want to kind of highlight something that some of you might already caught up on, but if you look at the reconstruct to county standards column, it's 36 million, 15 million, 7 million, 4 million. If we go back to the 2,300 tons per day, it's the same. So no matter what the tonnage is from the operator, our county standards, we have a baseline of what the road's thickness needs to be. And so those numbers won't change. The change is how much the operator's fair share would be. So I just wanted to point that out. So that's 2,300 and 1,700, same. And 1,000, same. Okay. So 1,700 tons per day. County share's repair costs for the existing route would be 2.5 million, operators 1.3. Proposed haul route, county cost would be a million over 18 years, excuse me. And the proposed haul route, operator's share would be 660,000. South Fairview, we would be responsible for half a million and the operator for about 300,000. And the Best Road Alternative, the county share would be 320,000 and the operator's share would be 134,000. And real quick, for 1,000 tons per day, the existing route, reconstructing that route would be 52 million, county's cost would be 36 again, operators would be 15 million. Proposed haul route, 24 million, our cost again would be 15 million and the operator's share would be about 9 million. South Fairview, our cost would again be 7.5 million, 7.6 million, and the operators would be 4.3. And the Best Road Alternative, ours would again be 4.7 million and the operator's cost would be 1.6, because you need a thinner pavement section as you have less tons on the road. Our repair costs, real quick, existing route, county share 2.6 million, operators 1.1. The proposed haul route, about a million for the county, 600,000 for the operator. South Fairview, 500,000 for the county, 300,000 for the operator. And Best Road, 339,000 for county and 116,000 for the operator. Should I pause there?
Sure.
Okay.
Are there any questions from the commission regarding the slides? Commissioner Way.
Yeah, I'm a little bit puzzled by the big difference between the reconstruct to anticipated loading column in each case, between the South Fairview Alternative and the Best Road Alternative, because those two alternatives, I believe, don't differ by a great deal. And I'm wondering, you know, what is it that makes them so different from each other? And I'm wondering, you know, what is it that makes them so different from each other?
So, actually, the, there is a difference in the length. So, if you go from the Fairview intersection all the way to the Best Road intersection, I don't know if it's a little over a mile, a little over there, maybe a mile and a half, that's all on Highway 25. And so, that cost is extracted from the cost of the calculation.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Commissioner Toledo?
So, this is going back also to the previous slide about the ZEV trucks. And I kind of wanted to cover that because of the tonnage that the trucks will be carrying and the damaging, since we're in that topic of the roads. Do you know if there's been studies in regards to the weight and tonnage on the ZEV trucks slowing down their speed because of the tonnage weight?
So, Joe and I were talking about this previously. I'll let Joe provide kind of, I think, a general response to that.
So, you're identifying something that we're all watching very closely as pavement engineers. The electric vehicles are heavier than their counterpart gas vehicles, whether you're looking at trucks, buses, cars, because of the battery weights. And so, they will impact the roads more.
And I get that, the impact will be there on the roads. However, do you know if there's a study or have they done any studies in regards to the speed limit being reduced because of the heavy weight tonnage that the garbage will be on the trucks?
I do know, I do not know of any study where they're looking at speeds of those vehicles.
And I'm only asking because I know it's basically something California, the state of California, right, that they want to eventually get into these emission vehicles by 2020, 2040. And since it wasn't talked about much in the presentation, I just wanted to get more information. So, how fast will these vehicles be put into, if passed? When will they start using them in the project, as right away or within the next several years?
I...
Oh, there you are, okay.
So, we do have to implement some of those requirements as they're required. One thing it's worth pointing out is the max tonnage overall of the truck is still 80,000 pounds. So, the truck might weigh a little bit more, but what that means is they'll have, they'll be able to put less payload into the truck. So, the max payload is still 80,000 pounds, just kind of an FYI.
Okay, thank you, Steve. I'm just trying to cover.
Those are great questions, great questions.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ringhaden? Proceed, please.
Does speed impact in a positive or negative way in the wear and tear of the road?
That's a little, little bit, right?
Not significantly. If the road is, does not have a smooth ride, then you can get some loading effects from that. But when pavements are designed, you're trying to make them as smooth as you can and there's specifications for smoothness. But if there's, if it's very bumpy, then yes, you can see some impacts from that.
Yeah, you would think that higher speed would be a higher impact.
Yes, correct.
Can I add to that?
Commissioner Toledo?
The only reason why I ask is because of exactly that, the limitation, our roads and the commuter, the daily commuter who is suffering and wants to get home, right? So, if they're going to be slow, then the daily commuter is going to be behind these slow trucks. So, I'm just asking, thank you.
Commissioner Scagliotti?
Yes, this is for Steve. We just paved over Best Road, right?
We did.
And what kind of standards did we do it to? A little better than county or just county?
The TI is 8.0, so if we had to, if that route was chosen, that road should last for 20 years, so we wouldn't have to rebuild it for 20 years. That road specifically, that road is good to go, so.
So, we're a step ahead already, so to speak.
Right, that's was, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions from the commission before we move on? Okay, please proceed.
All right, I think I'll turn it over to Bree for closing comments, is that right? And questions? Well, questions, yeah. So, thanks.
That concludes the presentation on the topics we had tonight. Unless the commission had any questions for any of the county presenters, we can turn it over to the applicant for their presentation.
Okay, any last questions for the county presenters? Okay, on to the applicant, please.
Thank you. Do you have a pathway, right?
I do, I hope. What button do I hit to advance this one? Okay, nice. Good evening, my name is Paul Nelson with John Smith Road Landfill Waste Connections. Thank you for the opportunity to present to the commission tonight. I appreciate all of staff's input. I think it's a lot of work done and it's excellent presentation. This first slide, if you will, shows, it's a photo of our dedicated workers on the top deck of the landfill as well. We have an aerial photo taken during springtime of the existing John Smith Road landfill. So, the first role presentation or topic that I would like to cover is really our history here in the county. We took over the operation of the landfill in 2005. And we were on a finite contract, that is, a term limit contract, franchise agreement operation contract. And that led us up till 2010, at which point we entered a life aside agreement based upon the value of the work that we were doing at the landfill. And in that agreement, we were given the opportunity to operate the landfill for the remainder of its existing life. As well, we were given the exclusive right to seek an expansion to a new landfill or expand this landfill or to a new landfill mutually agreed upon. And at that point in time, what the board was seeking was the inclusion of out-of-county flow. So, the site has always historically taken some level of out-of-county flow. We were part of the contract language in 2010, had us going out as the landfill operator and seeking flow from out-of-county to the tune of 400 tons a day, at which point we would trigger the life of site agreement and run the landfill for the remainder of its life. As well, coordinate with the county as their public-private partner to really cite a new expansion or a brand-new landfill. And that was done by unanimous vote by the Board of Supervisors in 2010. In 2019, we did a second amendment to that agreement. And that second amendment culminated in a mediation negotiation that took place in Sacramento and included Jim Gilio, Anthony Battello and Ray Espinoza, along with county consultants, whereby we agreed upon the Lima property, which is contiguous property to the landfill, to be the expansion area of the landfill, rather than potentially moving across the street to the 100 acres that was mentioned by Stan as an alternative brand-new landfill. So, parties agreed that, in fact, the Lima property would be the expanded landfill as opposed to a new landfill. And as a result, we went out and procured that property. Also, in the 2019 amendment, a fair amount of additional economics were negotiated to the benefit of the county. And those economics really culminated in what it would look like for payments to the county upon entitlement of this expansion. That all took place in 2019. 2020, we went ahead and actually went out and purchased that 388-acre Lima property and began in earnest the EIR document. The EIR document was prepared by some of our experts that are in the audience today as well. It was reviewed by county consultant, they're experts. And we believe what we have before you is an EIR document that was high, of very high quality, lots of eyes, a lot of experts, both on our team as well as the county team. And that's the EIR in front of you today. This next slide, I think Stan touched on it a fair amount. The existing landfill is 90 acres. The current footprint, that is where you actually placed waste, is 58 acres. On the new Lima property, which is a 388, 88-acre parcel, the footprint would be 195 acres. And I think there's a kind of a general misconception that, you know, immediately we would fill up, you know, that area. We're going to sequence, as discussed earlier, about the closure of the Class 1 facility. We're going to build out three to five acre cells and gradually move across the footprint of that. So, it's several years before we get to the placing of waste on that footprint, on the 195-acre footprint. Also, it should be noted that, you know, I think there's beliefs out there that you approve this, you flip a switch and we're taking 2,300 tons seven days a week. In fact, that's not the case. The EIR contemplates an increase in flow over the life of the landfill and there'd be a gradual increase, which I'll touch more on a later slide. This may be difficult to see, but the red line that you see is the outline of the 388-acre Lima property. And the green line, which is probably the harder line to see, that's the actual ultimate footprint where waste will be placed on the expanded area. It should be noted that when we purchased the Lima property, there's a cattle grazer that grazes on that 380 acres. And our intention is to continue cattle grazing throughout the life of the landfill, even as we increase on that larger footprint over time. We believe that anywhere from 150 to 190 acres, we will always, we will be able to always continue cattle grazing. We have cattle, we have cattle on the property now. We plan to have it throughout the life of the new landfill as well after the closure of the landfill. Now, alternatives were spoken to this expansion and really, John Smith Landfill, you know, is a critical public asset that's been serving this county since 1968. And if an expansion does not take place, we will likely fill up the airspace in the landfill by 2038, at which point in time it would be necessary for the county to cite a transfer station. And the process to cite that transfer station is no different than the process we're going through now with this expansion, in that an EIR would have to be put together. Well, first of all, a site would have to be selected and EIR put together, that facility built, that facility operated. And transportation of, let's call it, on average, 250 tons a day that's generated here in San Benito County to a third-party landfill in a different county, whether it's Mendocino or, excuse me, Monterey County or Merced County or City of San Jose. And as part of that, you know, what will happen, and I think you'll get an analysis from some of the county consultants on Friday, what the cost might be to the ratepayer, both residential and commercial. Rates will increase substantially as a result of this landfill, you know, basically wrapping up here in the county of San Benito in 2038. So, to cover some of the expansion benefits to the residents, clearly, right now, the haul trucks, the commercial garbage trucks, we charge the commercial garbage trucks $44.75 a ton. Self-haul to the landfill is $62.75 a ton. Those rates are going to increase dramatically, you know, in the event that the transfer station takes place. If the expansion takes place, the county will be able to control and be the master of their own destiny regarding landfill rates and you won't be necessarily beholding to a third-party county. Another benefit to the expansion, last year during the floods, there was a fair amount of debris created in the landfill. And that debris was tipped at no fee at John Smith Landfill. And I'm told during the Loma Prieta landfill, there was a fair amount of debris generated then, which the landfill was able to take and dispose of, rather than, again, having to depend on a third-party county, whatever rates they might charge. Also, you know, we're proud of, you know, our corporate relationship with the community. We're very involved in a lot of community efforts, not-for-profit efforts. One thing that we get excited about each and every year is the bicycle giveaway. We give 30 to 40 bikes to kids in the county each and every Christmas and...
Excuse me, Mr. Nelson, please do not interrupt the speaker. If you want to carry on conversations, do so outside the chambers. Thank you.
And this slide just shows some of the events that we've attended over the last Expansion benefits to the county, part of that negotiation that I talked about in 2019 has us paying, rather than a per-ton rate, a percentage to the county. And as we charge, an increase based upon cost of living for tip fees for all the out-of-county solid waste providers, the percentage, we convert from a per-ton basis to a percentage basis. So, as those rates go up, the percentage share with the county increases. The county disclosed, I think a year ago or so, that based upon the math that they calculated that an amount to the magnitude of 69.4 million would be paid to the county as a result of the increase in flow that is contemplated in the EIR in the first 15 years. And over the life of the landfill, it'd be $410 million. We actually provided an analysis where our numbers are greater than that. We calculated $75.5 million in the 15-year period and $653 million over the life of the site. Additional benefits to the county, we're currently operating a state-of-the-art landfill and that will happen as we continue the operation into the expanded landfill. Secondly, the supervisors can maintain control over the disposal rates for the residents as well as the commercial customers by having their own landfill and not be beholding to a third-party out-of-county landfill. Stan mentioned also that that clean closure would take place at some period during the build-out of the new landfill. And we can talk more about the timing of that. And then lastly, I think it's really important to mention tax generation to the county. There's a fair amount of investment over the life of the landfill, whether we're purchasing liners for the landfill, purchasing yellow iron equipment and supplies. The point of sale would always be here in San Benito County, generating tax revenue to the county. Over the last couple of weeks, we supplied to you support letters from some of the major stakeholders in the county. You received a support letter from San Benito Chamber of Commerce, San Benito Business Council, and then also a letter from Mark Medina, former supervisor of San Benito County. This might be a little difficult to see. This is, this is a rendering of what the new entrance, the entrance to the landfill. Currently, the entrance has queuing amounting to 870 feet. The new entrance, which would be further west on John Smith Road, would allow an entrance of 1,750 feet. And what we find when we do the Household Hazardous Day cleanups on Saturday, that often the residential vehicles go out on John Smith Road. And we believe that this will go a long way to alleviate traffic out in John Smith Road. Additionally, we agreed as part of the expansion agreement to pay for a turnpocket on John Smith Road landfill into this new entrance, which again is 880 feet longer than the one that exists now. Okay, so this slide basically addresses, you know, why accepting out-of-county waste. Basically, over, in 1989, the federal law changed, subtitled... subtitle D, basically required composite liners for landfills, which was hugely capital-intensive. And so all, various jurisdictions, whether cities or counties in California, you know, basically had their own landfill. And as these costs rose, I mean, we're paying approximately a million dollars an acre to put liner down on our landfill. And, and based upon the amount of flow that the various jurisdictions got, they couldn't afford to basically run landfill, that the flow took too long to pay back that capital investment. So as a result, what you find across the United States, as well as California closure of landfills. And so what, what that's led to is regionalization of garbage. I mean, I mean, it needs to be understood that in two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-four percent of the garbage generated here in San Benito County, believe it or not, was buried at a landfill outside the county. And also in two thousand and twenty-one, fourteen percent of Santa Clara's garbage was buried at John Smith landfill. So twenty-four percent of our garbage actually left the county and was buried elsewhere. You know, I, I think a strong indication of regionalization of landfills. So if you look at this chart, there's nineteen rural counties in California. And currently, there's eleven counties that actually have landfills, eleven of those nineteen. And if you fast-forward to us basically using up all the airspace in the existing landfill in two thousand and thirty-eight, there's going to be either seven or eight landfills, depending on whether this entitlement gets approved or not. Basically, further illustrating regionalization taking place in, in landfills. So as, as the expansion takes place, what to expect? And here's where I talk about the ramp of incremental tons. The EIR looked at, you know, how the tons would come in. And basically, regional landfills, there's a couple competitive regional landfills in our marketplace. There's the Marina landfill over in Mendocino. There's Billy Wright landfill in Merced, as well as us. When we're in the out-of-county landfill business, you know, we stopped taking out-of-county flow on March thirty-first of last year. But when we're in the marketplace competing, we compete against other counties for this material. And because of that, it's going to take a fair amount of time to ramp up that incremental flow from out-of-county. And the EIR reflects that. The EIR shows a ramp in the increased tons to the tune of, on average, on a seven-day average, nine hundred tons the first year, twelve hundred tons the fifth year, seventeen hundred tons the tenth year, and twenty-one hundred tons beginning in year fifteen. So this is a far cry from flipping a switch and receiving flow, twenty-three hundred tons a day. I'd also need to go on record by saying that out-of-county flow takes place generally, or by and large, on Monday through Friday. Rarely is it that we'll see out-of-county flow on Saturdays and Sundays. The market doesn't, doesn't dictate that. And then also mentioned previously in staff presentation, our recommendation for the haul route is best road. And our recommendation is simply based upon, that's the least distance, the least amount of time that these out-of-county truck traffic actually uses county roads, that the predominant pathway would be twenty-five to best road. And because of that low impact, or, you know, shortest route on county prop, or county roads, that's the basis of our recommendation. This, this next couple of slides talk about road impact. And, and what we did is we went into the analysis prepared by the pavement company and looked at what the dollars are that would be necessary to pay for the road maintenance and repair on the best road route at twenty-three hundred tons a day. And based upon our negotiation in two thousand and nineteen, we agreed to pay two buckets of two million dollars each, as well, road impact fee of a dollar per ton. So we've accumulated, and at the time of entitlement, we'll have paid into that fund an amount equal to four point eight-five billion dollars. And if you, as, you know, my engineer and I reviewed the analysis done by the pavement company, the initial road improvement is two point four million dollars. There'd be another improvement done in, in two thousand, some, twenty-three. And for a, a total cost of four point six million dollars, of which we will have already paid in four point eight-five million dollars. So, you know, if you, if you kind of fast-forward to, to two thou- two thousand, or, fast-forward twenty-three years, our revenue share with the county would be eighty-four point eight million dollars. And we're projecting to pay eleven point eight million dollars in two thousand and twenty-four. In the annual road impact, our fair share amounts to a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars if we read the study accurately, beginning in two thousand and twenty-four. So we would like the county to absorb the costs beginning in twenty-four for this road impact based upon the use of best road. So in summary, we're basically, beginning in two thousand and ten, we entered a public-private partnership. And so the county looked to us, you know, as, you know, hopefully, a very talented landfill operator to basically solve their landfill needs, you know, for generations to come. We've done a very good job from an environmental protection perspective during our tenure. We intend to do that over the remainder of the expanded life of the landfill. Secondly, a key point is local control for the, the supervisors and you folks included to basically maintain control over solid waste needs for the county for generations to come and not have to depend on some of these third-party other regional landfills. And, and finally, the financial benefits to the county and the residents, you know, rate stabilization for the ratepayers, for those folks that pay the disposal bills, whether it's residential or commercial, as well the significant revenue generation to the county. So that concludes my presentation.
Are there any questions from the commissioners regarding the applicant's presentation? Commissioner Way?
Yes, and forgive me if, if I already have a copy. There's a lot of material here. Will we be given, or do we already have a copy of the applicant's presentation?
No, I'd be glad to share it.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Toledo?
Thank you for your presentation. And when I did take the tour, the science behind the landfill is truly amazing, and just keep, how well you've had it kept up, and I appreciate that. So thank you.
Yeah. Well, can I make a comment on top of your comment? We lea- recently had the LEA, or, you know, actually Cal Recycle Inspector come out, and he said it's probably one of the best landfills he has to come and examine. And he wished all landfills that he does, these inspections, were run like John Smith Road landfill.
Definitely.
We appreciated that from you as well as from him.
Yes, and I do want to add that, for anyone in the public, just take a tour there because you will definitely see how well it's maintained. So thank you.
Commissioner Ringhaden? Commissioner Scagliotti?
Yeah, a couple of questions. If this gets approved, how soon will you put in the drive, the new driveway, the new staging area for off of John Smith Road?
So we'll have to get it, I think we're talking one to three years, Kurt? Is that the timeframe? To put, put in the new entrance.
Okay. And going back to the water quality stuff, how often are you guys monitored for runoff and underground, like checking wells around there? How often do they monitor you for that? How often are you checked?
I don't want to give you the wrong answer.
You won't.
Hi, I'm Kurt Fuji. I'm the regional engineer for Northern California for Waste Connections, the parent company to Waste Solutions. Under our permit from the Water Board, we are required to sample groundwater twice a year. It started off at four times a year quarterly, then based on consistency of results, we were able to back off to twice a year. We report twice a year to the Water Board, the results of all of that monitoring. For surface water, this kind of gets a little complicated. I make, I don't want to engineer nerd out on you, but there is surface water monitoring that coincides with the groundwater monitoring under the permit from the Water Board, the waste discharge requirement. That, again, is twice a year. In addition to that, we have our industrial stormwater permit that requires us to sample and analyze stormwater runoff from four rain events each year. Two in the July to December thirty-first period, and then two in January first to June thirty.
One other question, and if you get a, a hit of some magnesium or something, it's really high in the water, what's the state do, come in and shut you down right away? Make you find a leak? What happens if you, if they do find a leak?
If we do find a leak, the first step is to re-sample and confirm it. If it is confirmed, then under state regulations, you go from what is called a detection monitoring program. The name kind of explains it, you know, standard operations, no problems, but you're looking for them, you're looking to detect them. If you do confirm an impact, you advance to what is called evalu- an evaluation monitoring program. We have to submit a work plan to the Water Board saying, here's how we're going to respond to that, here's the monitoring we're going to do. And once you complete an evaluation monitoring program, if that confirms that you have, and do indeed have an impact, then you go into what's called corrective action.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that concludes applicant presentation. Now we have county response, if any?
Good evening, Bree Mobius. I don't believe there's any clarifications on the economic analysis. The county consultants will be presenting that on Friday, so we'll, we'll wait to respond to that. And I just did want to point out, I think, Commissioner Scagliotti, you asked about when the entrance would be open. And we did receive public comments on a lot of the improvements, that there wasn't a timing piece. So the final EIR and the mitigation measures added a critical timing element for each requirement. And as to the entrance area, it requires the applicant to submit for the permits within two years of approval, and then have it open to the public within one year of the last county permit being issued.
Thank you. Before we go to public comment, we're going to take a five-minute recess. So if you need to use the facilities, please do so. Five minutes, please.
Okay, we now returning to the meeting. Just a reminder for public comment, it is limited to two minutes. Please only discuss the items that were on today's agenda. Any interruptions, you will have a warning. Any further interruptions, then we will ask you to leave the chambers. Before we go to the Zoom comments, we ask that the entire chamber take care of their comments in person. Once we go to Zoom, we will not come back to the chambers. Stephanie, if you could please reread the procedures.
Absolutely, Chair. The San Bernardino County Planning Commission welcomes your comments. Each individual speaker will be limited to a presentation total of two minutes. When addressing the commission via Zoom phone or in chambers, please state your name and county in which you reside for the record. Please address the commission as a whole through the chair. If participating via Zoom, select the Participants tab and click the Raise Hand icon. If you are using a phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. When your turn arrives, you will hear that you have been unmuted. If you are participating in person at the chambers, please complete a speaker card identifying the item on which you wish to speak, and provide your completed card to the clerk prior to consideration of the item. Speaker cards are available on the table at the entrance to the chambers.
Thank you. Please proceed with public comment.
Okay. Our first speaker is going to be Tony LaBeou. You will have two minutes. Please approach the podium.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Tony LaBeou, and I'm a resident of San Bernardino County. One of the largest complaints we have in San Bernardino County is we don't have infrastructure. We don't have infrastructure for roads, we don't have infrastructure for water, we don't have infrastructure for sewer, we don't have infrastructure for schools. Well, one of those legs of infrastructure is our waste management. And with the exception of sewer, we're behind the eight ball on almost all aspects of our infrastructure problems. So to address these problems, we have a golden opportunity here to allow the private sector to pick up the ball and take care of one of our infrastructure problems that we have. They're willing to do this and address one of our legs of infrastructure, and let's let them do it. The concept that we'll be able to build another landfill is not realistic, and the opposition here tonight is just a taste of what the opposition will be like in the future if we don't have a landfill in San Bernardino County. I encourage you to move forward with the expansion, and thank you for your dedicated dedication to our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, John Robles, you will have two minutes. Please approach the podium.
Good evening, Commission. I have a cautionary statement to make. I understand that the representative here from Waste Connections talked about community goodwill and so forth, and dedicated employees, so I want to go ahead and focus that. Not sure if you understand this or have heard about this, but Waste Connections has incurred fines of $2.76 million since 2000. The top five reasons for these fines were, number one, wage and hour violations. There were two of them to the tune of $915,000. There were labor relations violations, there was three of them totaling $630,000. There were 14 environmental fines issued to them to the tune of $655,000. This one really surprised me, employment discrimination. Discrimination to the tune of $300,000 in fines. And then the last one, workplace safety violations to the tune of $229,000. There were 20 of those violations. So my recommendation to the commission here is really take this very seriously. These are the people you are doing business with. You know, it was really cute that, you know, they're a, you know, really good relationship with the community, but if they can't take care of their own employees, how do you expect they're going to take care of the community? That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Kristina Juravich. Kristina Juravich. Okay. Roland R. Bridget Bowman-... Wait, sorry.
Roland Resentis.
Roland, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Roland Resentis, and I'm here tonight as a private citizen of the city of Hollister. At the beginning of this meeting, we had two commissioners admit, which is every right, they can do that, that they had a private meeting with somebody who has a financial interest in the decision they're going to make tonight. One of them met with the public, congratulations to you, sir. One of them didn't meet the public at all. Everybody else here met with the public. One person sitting up there had a private tour, again, from the people who are going to benefit financially. Although it's allowed and it's perfectly legal to do that, I think it's in very poor taste, commissioners, that you would do that. When you have these conversations with people who have a vested interest in the decisions you make, a vested financial interest, it is very, very poor taste. Those people should come here tonight, they should be having the same conversations and giving the same information to the public. If you want to meet with constituents in private, fine, not everybody can be here tonight because they're stuck in traffic, because they're working from 3:00 in the morning. And as Tony LaBeou, who was just up here before, who failed to mention, he is a pro-city council member-
Excuse me, don't talk to other members of the audience, sir.
...who was here and made a decision about all of these, who's now the president of the real estate company-
You can address the commission as a whole.
Says we need infrastructure, you're right, we need infrastructure, and you folks took a note like this gentleman tonight to protect the Constitution and to work for the people. Sometimes you have to go against the grain, sometimes you have to say no. You have to listen to the voice of the people, you have to protect their interests, and not put profit over the public's interest. Do not dump on San Bernardino County, you should be working to preserve it. Shame on you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Bridget Bowman-Thorpe, please approach the podium, you will have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Bridget Bowman-Thorpe. I heard so much about the trucks and the haul route, and it is absolutely ridiculous, this whole haul route. It's the roads, I drive those on Fairview and Shore Road almost every day, and they're torn up, and they're country roads. I don't know if you've driven on Shore Road or even Wright Road, two small country roads. And by the way, and then I want to say another thing, I made a comment about, I care very much about the children, I made a comment about Centennial Ranch, I'm sorry, about Rancho Santana School, why their monitoring station was not mentioned. And they actually did a study on the table 4.3-1, where they quoted the carbon dioxide per million from Salinas High School. And they're... And it says the Rancho Santana School does not include an air quality monitoring station, and that's why they refer to Salinas High School. That haul route is on Rancho Santana School. So this EIR is incomplete, first of all. And there's so many incomplete studies done, I feel like the FBI cannot be finalized. This is disregard to the children here in this county, and anybody who lives on the haul route are going to be exposed to these emissions for eight hours. I see those kids playing outside on the grass, they will be all affected by it. I hope Paul Nelson, you know, he doesn't live here, but we do, and our children live here, and we are going to be exposed by these emissions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Elvia... Oh, sorry. The letter we're going to read was written by Sarah Stein, and Elvia Skow is going to read it for us.
Good evening, Elvia Skow, San Bernardino resident. There is a long list of reports concerning the John Smith landfill expansion project, and I appreciate the details given to this controversial plan. My first comment concerns heavy truck emissions. The October 25th packet contains extensive reporting on the impacts of increasing of the number of heavy trucks on noise, vibration, traffic, and roads. Expanding the landfill to accommodate out-of-county garbage and the resulting increased heavy-duty truck traffic will also increase neighborhood air pollution. Nitrogen oxide, ozone, and particulate matter, air pollution is a significant issue. These pollutants are specifically linked to respiratory and/or cardiovascular problems. Children are especially sensitive. Air pollution from heavy trucks directly affects people who live near roads and other areas of high truck activity like the landfill. Populations who live, work, or go to school near haul routes may experience higher rates of a variety of adverse health effects. As traffic increases and stoplights are installed for traffic safety, or trucks back up on days of heavy landfill use, idling truck emissions are an increased environmental hazard and should be addressed. Thank you.
Sandy Peterson, please approach the podium, you will have two minutes. Apologies, Sandy Patterson.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, audience. My name is Sandy Patterson Jamark, and I live at Fairview Mobile Manor. And my concern is the tonnage that's going to go across these roads. These are asphalt-based roads, folks. There's only two to four inches of asphalt. Why do you think we have so many potholes in the roads? I've driven semi. I've worked with my dad, who was an operating engineer. I've paved roads. I've sat on a barber green. I know what goes underneath, and the base rock, and if you don't do it, you see US 101 and I-5, they're concrete. They're not asphalt. That's what semis go across. They're not going to last 20 years, whichever you do with best road. It's not going to last. There's too much tonnage. It's ludicrous to put that much tonnage across these roads. They're going to collapse, and you're going to put the people in San Bernardino County at risk by making these decisions, by bringing stuff in from garbage and from the other counties. You're only talking 250 tons coming from San Bernardino, and you're not even talking about what's coming from out of county. You don't even touch that. And all this things up on the screen about your asphalt, it's a bunch of double talk, unless you've actually driven semi. These trucks and trailers, the trucks, depending on what model, Kenworth, Peterbilt, or International, go from 10,000 to 25,000 pounds just for the tractor. They're not even calling them semis, they're giving them another name, so you're not being transparent about what's being said. And your trailers are going from another 10,000 to 15,000. Thank you.
Carl Skow, you may approach the podium, you will have two minutes.
Good evening, Carl Skow, fourth-generation farming family in San Bernardino County. I brought some prepared comments, but listening to our speakers this evening, I'm going to diverge on that. In the fact that when they brought out their road report analysis, they noted on page two that no factor has been made for inflationary costs, even though inflation has risen in 23 that they noted. In addition, they also noted in their footnotes, not even in their calculations, that the costs to improve best roads, starting at $5 million for the county to bring it up to standard. This is after the work has just been done, and after we were just told that this would not cost anything. Their report does say it's $5.7 million potential to the county, 25 million, and he said 36 this evening, if we take Shore Road. We've just watched what happened to Shore Road over the last 10 years, and now, as the gentleman said, we're paying now to go forwards. Where is all that money we're making? It's going to lay out for what we've just done. I myself am very glad I will be not living on best road. They talk about the noise pollution. Well, they don't have 90 trucks running down the road right now, and if you live there, I'm not sure you'd really prefer to have 90 trucks running across your area. There are other options that are approved for these large trucks, and I would approve, I would hope that our commissioners think about this, and what is being promised to us, and what really comes out. I would suggest that we stay with the minimal 300 tons a day, and take this down a level from where they are. Let's go ahead, we can always increase this in the future.
Thank you.
Jan Grist, please approach the podium, you will have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Jan Grist, and I've been a member of the Hollister community since 1990, and then I became a homeowner here in 2002. I spent the last 33 years teaching and guiding children with the Hollister School District. At present, I own a home at Rancho Santana. We, as the adults here in San Bernardino County, we're the stewards of the land. We're the caretakers of the land. We have to take care of this for future generations. I've taken the tour, it's a marvelous tour. The people that run it right now, great people, but what's to prevent them from selling the company? This is done in business all the time. We don't know who we're going to work with. It happens all the time. So they might be great now, and I would agree, but businesses get bought and sold, and then who are we with? And the idea that there's going to be 98, 118 trucks going across our new school for Hollister School District, where the kids are playing baseball and soccer, we got to think of the kids? Because this is what it's all about, is our children and our future generations, and we are the caretakers here. We are making the decisions for our children and future children. So I beg you to think about that. This isn't about money, this is about our legacy. What are we giving our kids? Because that's why we're here. We're supposed to be the adults, we're supposed to care for them. And I beg you to think about that before you make your decision.
Thank you. Please hold your applause.
I'm going to apologize in advance, I think this is Andy Shah Coran, Andy, okay.
Hi, my name is Andy Shah Coran. I've lived in San Bernardino County since 1986. It's clear to me that when we partner with big corporations like this, that often they don't end up doing us great service. One, they're here to make money. I'll give a case in point, I live near the Granite Rock mine, and this year, you know, I went through a whole battle over how they were supposed to operate. Thousands of tons of their materials went down the creeks and out the Elkhorn Slough. If there was anybody on top of it, they'd be suing our county for millions and millions of dollars because they didn't enforce- of dollars because they didn't enforce--
Can you stick to the seedlings topic?
--the ability to actually police activities. You're far better off deciding that you're going to take care of your dump yourself. The city of Watsonville, which is similar scale to us, is running their own dump, and they got, get the grants to do it properly. We do not need somebody out here who says, "Oh, well, we'll clean up the toxic waste area here." Get your grants from the feds or the states to clean it up. Don't bring in somebody else here that either threatens you with higher prices, more costs in the future, or bribes you with the idea that they're going to clean up these things, because frankly, they're not going to do a fantastic job. And having people from our county who are responsible to the people of our county policing it would be far better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nelda Eskamila, Eskamia, sorry, you may approach the podium. You will have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Nelda Eskamia. I've been in Hollister, I think '93, if I'm not mistaken. First and foremost, I want to talk to the commissioners in this, in this particular instance, that most of us are over 50, and I might be wrong with this Toledo, Pocanegra. But, you know, like the lady stated earlier, we are the stewards. Where are our children going to be in 10, 15 years, 20? Where are you going to be? Where am I going to be? Doesn't matter. We're not going to be here. But it does matter. It matters for our children. They're the ones that are going to be here in our future. We may be 80 or 90 or 100. Let's us hope that they're healthy enough to take care of us, per se, or they may not. We don't know. Let's look what the future is, okay? Money is always going to be there all the time, and this is a business proposition. It's always about money. Who's making the money? I'm not. I hope you're not. So who is making the money? That's what it always boils down to. We're not ready. You're putting the cart in front of the horse right now. We have to look at our infrastructure, which means roads, traffic, two to three hours? That's ridiculous. Ridiculous. Not just that, there's so many other things, and I know the sewer isn't part of this, but even that, double capacity, this one is supposed to be more than double, the capacity, and of course, everybody talked about the trucks and the maintenance and the roads and all that is, we're talking about millions of dollars. I'm not an engineer. I'm sure they know what they're talking about. That's what they're getting paid for, and that's all fine and dandy, but what it boils down to is our future generations. Think about that. That's very important. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mary Shah Coran?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I was pleased to hear about the composting alternative, and I do support that. The thing I question is whether some of the statements about the landfill being state-of-the-art, first of all, there isn't any composting, and organic matter is, has been dumped there continuously, and that's a big source of methane, which is a, a really potent greenhouse gas. The other thing I wanted to point out is the EIR talks about, I think in the methane plume, a lot of toxic chemicals, including Freon, and they really should not have even ended up in there. What it really is, is that there's an, it indicates that people have been illegally dumping in this landfill, a lot of toxic chemicals. And the fact that, and those are just the volatile ones that, that have been detected in that methane, when they burn the methane, I think that's what they're detecting it in. It's outgassing with, with the stuff that's burned with the methane. But there's another toxic leak that no one has talked about, and that is PFAS. PFAS is a flame retardant. It's very prevalent. It's considered a forever chemical, very toxic, and they're finding it everywhere. So the, I, I saw a letter from the Central Coast Water Board, it's been over a year, citing this landfill and for, for having a leak. I think they detected this in their monitor wells. And so because of that, there was a letter that was sent to the landfill company demanding that they take the next step, which is to monitor their neighbor's wells, so all the wells around, finding people who would let them test. It's a very expensive test. So I guess my, my concern is that this is not a state-of-the-art landfill. In fact, I remember when I was canvassing in front of a store, handy, helping the landfill group.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Barbara Tadeo, please approach the podium. You will have two minutes.
My name is Barbara Tadeo, and I live at Heatherwood Estates, which is important. The first thing that I want to address is the fact of this natural gas tying in with the PG&E line. Do you know where the PG&E line goes? Right down Best Road. So you're going to tell me that you're going to have these heavy trucks going down Best Road? Are we going to come another San Bruno? If none of you know what San Bruno is, that's where the gas lines blew up and killed several people and destroyed houses. The second thing that I want to address is, three years ago, I was told by one of the supervisors that they were going to pave Fairview. I'm still waiting. It's not done, and the cost of the repairs should not come from San Benito County, but it should come from the dump money, because they're the ones with the heavy trucks destroying the roads. This, the third thing is, I'm not, I live, like I said, right off of John Smith, and I see the trucks go by every day, and in 18 years, I've never, ever seen them do a test on the sound of the trucks. Where they're doing it, I have no idea, but they're sure as heck not doing it on John Smith. And a third thing that I want to address is the fact that we're actually have a cancer pocket out there. Our aquifer, he mentioned earlier this, in this presentation today, that there's no filter. So in the summer of 2022 especially, it was so high that we have a high manganese, arsenic, and E. coli count in our well water, and we have a mutual well. We're not, it's not my own private well, but 26 residents are on the same well, and we still have a high arsenic and a high manganese, not as high as the summer of 2022, but it's there, and my animals, as I told you last meeting, have died.
Thank you.
JW Payne? Okay.
He's, he's coming.
Oh, thank you, sorry. I looked up and didn't quite see--
I'm glad I won't have your guys' job. No comment. My name is JW Payne. I'm actually running for State Assembly, but I'm here as a citizen of San Benito County. In 1990, I fell in love with a beautiful girl from San Benito County, and I've never left, and I, I love this town. As a truck driver, a couple of things I want you guys to understand. Haul trucks are not road trucks. Haul trucks are the ones you have at Granite Rock, the big earth movers. We are called semis. All right, so that's very important. And the weight that you're talking about, I'm one of those people that drive to San Jose every day, and I hate to tell you this, but I drive a semi back to Hollister and work, and I'm one of those people that messes up your roads. I apologize for, for the inconvenience there.
Please address the commission, sir.
I apologize to you guys, not them then. We, my concern is the traffic. The roads will be destroyed more. As someone that drives the road every single day, and our roads hurt my back. I mean, it's, it's just, and we have air rights, so I hate to feel how bad you guys have to go through all those potholes. I don't know if they're ever going to fix the roads correctly so we could actually drive them, but I want you guys to know, I apologize for all the other truck drivers. Let's reduce the trucks if we can. Just don't tell my company I said that.
Thank you.
Doyle Goines? You may approach the podium. You have two minutes.
Hello, I'm Doyle Goines. Live in San Benito County. I, the landfill, I think it's a regret solution for waste. The resources recovery, trash to cash, does not eliminate waste. It releases energy that's contained, example, plastic paper, foodstuffs, junk, leaves, residue, and waste, and changes the form of waste into heavy metals, for example. The public bears, brunts the disposal. I think that way we should go is zero waste. I think it's alternative, careful trash collection. It aims to memorize the amount of material sent to our landfills by capturing valuable resources and an engineering design revolution. It makes waste valuable. One of the people that started this was Gavin Newsom, mayor at the time of San Francisco. He got on board. He had the pay-as-you-drow program. He, he billed for household rubbish, but he sent to landfills, but did not charge for recycling, compost, or clothing that was overlooked for free. Had containers for it. Also, CalRecycle is very much into this program and have a lot of funding for it, and California Integrated Waste Management Board, Sacramento State Strategic Reduce, Reduce, Reuse, Recycle, Solid Waste Materials Back to Nature by Using Zero Waste of California. The emphasis shifts away from focusing on landfill--
Thank you, sir.
Alex Larson, you may approach the podium. Not yet. Elias Salinas, you may approach the podium. You have two minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Planning Commissioners. So I would first like to say that thank you to the Board of Supervisors, the Planning Commissioners, City Council members, and the City Planning Commissioners for taking advantage of going out and taking the tours of the landfill so they can personally do their research on what exactly is going on out there. It's 388 acres and everyone, the noise, the noise going on, it's, it's going to be 388 acres, and we're learning, no, it's not 388 acres. There's going to be 193 buffer to it. So Santa, San Benito County has a dilemma. We expand the existing landfill or we find an appropriate location for a transfer station. What does that entail? It entails finding the correct location. Where are you going to find a location in San Benito County? Is it going to be in South County? No. Is it going to be in North County? More than likely. And if it were going to be in North County, now you're going to have to build it out. You're going to have to go through the EIR. Does San Benito County have, $5 million is what so far has been spent on this EIR we're talking about. Does San Benito County have $5 million to pay for themselves to do a transfer station? I don't believe that we do. So we need to think about the future. You're absolutely right. People, we are thinking about the future. The future of where is San Benito County going to put their garbage? If you do not allow for an expansion, you have maybe 11 and a half or 12 years for local garbage. Then what happens to the future, that garbage, we're going to have to take it out of town. We're going to have, it's going to have costs. So what you do is you think about what we can do for then. The land is owned, no matter what, by Waste Connections, and so the opportunity to expand would be now, and you're expanding for the future for children and grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Alex Larson, please approach the podium. You will have two minutes.
My name is Alex Larson. I live in Gilroy, California. I have business interests down here in this area, and I'm looking to expand down here as my businesses are being taken by eminent domain in the very near future. I see that many people are very upset about this garbage dump being expanded, and I hear a lot of conjecture about how awful it is, but I don't see any of your empirical studies. I hear just people talking.
Please address the commission. It's better on the microphone.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. So that really bothers me that there's this kind of angst about this. I also noticed that when they were showing the amount of money that it's going to cost to repair the roads, that it does not take into account that it's going to be ramped up over a period of time. Not that, that 2,300 number for repairing the roads is going to be right there right now. It's going to be something that's ramped up over a period of time also. I think that it's something that's needed, and with moving my businesses down here, I can see that we're going to need the extra space also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Maureen Nelson, you may approach the podium. You will have two minutes.
Good evening. Thank you, Planning Commissioners. So let's start. Thank you, Paul Nelson, for letting us know that Santa Clara County sends in 14% of their trash here. Santa Clara County has 1,886,000 residents. 14%, equates to 264,040 people. That's a lot more than live in San Benito County. San Benito County exports 24% of our trash. Seems like a lot of trash. When you look at our county residents, we have 66,677. That equates to a much smaller figure of 9,344 trash. Quite a difference from 264,000. Thank you for bringing that to my attention, Mr. Nelson. I appreciate that. So let's talk about water. In the EIR, there's 408,000 gallons per day that will be used from an aquifer, I'm sorry, per month, from an aquifer at Shore Road and 25. 408,000 gallons. Water weighs eight pounds per gallon. When you start looking at traversing that water from Shore Road and 25 down to John Smith to tamp down the waste and the dust, we're talking more road damage to our roads. Electric vehicles, just found out tonight, had no idea, that the electric chassis will weigh more than a standard truck. So the haul trucks in electric vehicles that we're also happy to have because they help our environment will weigh more. So now, we will be taking in more than 95 trucks per day each way for 190 trucks circling. We will be taking more because they cannot haul as much per truck. That was new information today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Annette Perez, you may approach the podium. You will have two minutes.
Hello, my name's Annette Perez. I live in San Benito County, and I'm asking you not to approve this landfill expansion. Waste Connections will be the big winner in our county, and its people will suffer the consequences. We are, we are left with almost 500 acres of decomposting waste. I want, I went on a tour of the landfill, and Waste Connections showed me a liner that they had said was rated 30 years. However, this landfill expansion is estimated to last 65 years. It will outlast the liners. The landfill liners degrade, they tear, they crack, and they are not warranted for 50 or 65 years. They can't keep all the liquids from leaching into the ground. No mitigation measures, 100%. If you approve this massive expansion, our kids will be the ones to suffer the consequence when the leachate gets into our groundwater. San Benito County has a waste stream, has consistently used less than 240 tons a day since its inception in 1968. We are a rural agriculture community, and the landfill was never intended to be a regional solution for five other counties that are depositing their trash in our landfill. Why should our county allow a multi-billion-dollar company to accept 2,300 tons of waste 361 days a year? This is an environmental injustice to our small town of Hollister. The trucks that bring the out-of-county waste are passing other landfills because the waste operators, Waste Connections, are charging a low price. So the lower the price, the more, the more the trash that they have to bring in. One large semi truck driving from Alameda County and back will emit 27,182 grams of COT in the air-- in the air, multiply that by 361 days a year, and that's 9,812,846 grams of CO2 per year for just one truck. We will have 94 trucks, seven days a week, weeks at 361 days. These trucks will be depositing unnecessary greenhouse gases in our air.
Thank you.
Zachary Hedley? I think I might hear him coming. You may approach the podium, you have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Zachary Hedley. I have been a resident of San Benito County for over 20 years, and I want to say thank you. I am the one guy who's in the middle of the road on all of this situation. I would just like to ask the commission if it is possible that we do a little bit more research. For example, it's 8.34 pounds per cubic foot of water. We need to know how far down these gas lines are. We need to understand that there is filtration for water in these areas, and we do need to also understand that, yes, there's going to be private money involved, private lands involved, new things that happen. But this can bring a new economy, new boosting to the economy, so it can be a good thing. But what can we do to do more studies outside of a simple contracted specialist that comes by and gives a certain quota on something? How can we do more of an investigation on how this impacts our community, and how we're able to boost our economy as we know our population growth is growing? So I'm asking for more investigation into this matter before moving forward so quickly in a day and age where we're used to moving forward very quickly in things. And that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Okay, there are no more public comments. Ew, just kidding?
Okay. This, yes. Before, before we go to Zoom, I'm asking everyone in the chambers to please submit your card, because once we go to Zoom, we're not going to come back to in-chambers comment. Thank you.
Okay, so Kurt Fuji, please approach the podium, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Hi, Kurt Fuji, Region Engineer for Waste Connections. I just wanted to quickly correct what I perceived as an incorrect impression of the landfill that was given, which is that it was, someone said, implied that the state singled out John Smith Road landfill for PFAS impacts. I'm familiar with those letters, they went out to at least 100, over 100 landfills in the state. PFAS are very, they're, they're everywhere. They're in McDonald's, they're at Rappers. If you have a McDonald's, a Starbucks, if you use dental floss, you likely have PFAS in your trash. So all of those landfills reported PFAS. John Smith Road landfill received a letter from the Regional Water Quality Control Board, because this region is leading the pack. All of the landfills detected PFAS. This regional board said, okay, incorporate PFAS into your routine monitoring. They did not single out John Smith Road, and I want to say also, there is a letter that I can provide to the county between now and Friday, that says that the existing corrective action program at John Smith Road, we talked about corrective action, is effective in capturing and mitigating PFAS impacts.
Thank you, and please submit that.
Okay, and then we're going to go to Carly Robles. You may approach the podium, you will have two minutes.
Good evening. The graph shown earlier showed that the rate of degradation started to increase after 12 years for the roads. The 20-year timeline is misleading. What about the soil beneath the road surface? It's not been mentioned at all. The truck noise is right up against the allowed threshold. Even though it's below, it's close to the limit, in my opinion. Why are we in a systematically active size, earthquake active zone in most of the regional in terms of activity? The max vehicle weight stated is 80,000 pounds. That approaches the load of an air, of a commercial aircraft, and that requires concrete several feet thick. Let's do better with the roads. Yes, PFAS are everywhere. That doesn't mean it's okay to put more in our county. We don't need more PFAS anywhere, especially in our county. Maybe in Waste Connections backyard, but not in ours. And when a billion-dollar company starts their presentation with, "We give bikes to kids," that should be a red flag. That's the best they can do to make themselves look good? They're a corporation and only care about profits and kickbacks to shareholders. Please keep our county for us.
Thank you.
Chair, I have no more in-chamber comment cards.
Final opportunity for in-chamber public comment. See none, oh, you can only go once, sir.
Okay.
Please proceed to Zoom.
Okay, we're going to move to Zoom. Neil, you have been unmuted. You will, oh wait, no, wait, sorry, technical difficulties, hang on. What's happening here? Why won't it let me unmute him? Neil, can you try to unmute yourself? Oh, Neil, it says allowed to talk is not available, because you are using an older version of Zoom. Uh, should I? Neil, you're going to have to call in on a phone. Hang on, hang on, Maureen, we have a phone number he can call, okay? All right. Neil, I'm going to read the number aloud for you, okay? Type into your mobile cell number, 14086380968.
Are there additional instructions after that? Can we go to the next speaker?
He's the only hand raised via Zoom. Does anyone else on Zoom would like to share a public comment? Okay. I have no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, if the gentleman is able to come back, we will take his comment. Other than that, public comment is closed.
Okay.
Back to the commission. Are there any comments or questions from the commission? Commissioner Toledo?
No comments at this time.
Commissioner Way?
Nothing in particular from me, thank you.
Commissioner Scagliotti?
Not at the moment.
Commissioner Ringhaden?
Not at the moment.
Okay. No, I don't have any comments or questions at this time. So what is the plan? Trying to give the speaker an opportunity to call in here. Just a few moments, please. And please remember to update your version of Zoom if you are watching from home. Thank you. Stephanie, is there any new attendee?
Not yet. I think he does have to enter in the webinar ID and password.
Could, could you just call him and, and put the phone up to the microphone, please? I'd like to continue the meeting.
Hi Neil, I'm just going to put you up to the microphone here, where you can speak.
Oh boy, okay. There you go. Hello, I hope this works, my name's Neil Anderson. And I, I got some statistics here. Steve Wall of the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. He says safeguards are in place to keep toxins in the landfill and out of surrounding communities. However, people are concerned because trash inside lasts for generations. He says most U.S. landfills in the United States are called dry tunes. No liner can keep all liquids out of the ground for all times. All liners will eventually degrade, tear, or crack, liquids migrate out of the unit and get into the groundwater. EPA has concluded that. The more reasonable assumption based on what is known about the pressures placed on liners over time, is that any liner will be into leak eventually. What I liked about our meeting tonight was at the very beginning, we swore in a new, a new member of the board. And, and part of that, that swearing in said, you defend the Constitution of the state and of the union. We had another little statement that said, to approve, you must feel that the benefits outweigh the impacts. At what point do you, do you overweight the impacts of what toxic chemicals and the role they're going to play in the water has on our community? And this isn't maybe going to hit us right away, but 100 years from now, it's going to come back to haunt us, because that garbage is going to be in the ground for the next thousand years.
Thank you. Thank you. Public comment is closed. Back to the commission. Thank you. What is the will of the commission? Is there a motion to continue this until 6:00 PM on Friday, October 27th?
I make a motion that we continue this until Friday, October 27th at 6:00 PM.
There are seconds?
Second the motion.
Commissioner Ringhaden seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, this meeting is adjourned.